For the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is a policy meeting. Before we start, I have to read, I was asked to make this on public record, so I will read this on public record. It says, Chairman Seabolt, we would respectfully ask that you reschedule the Board of Selectmen's policy meeting for January 16th to an alternative date. We are unable to attend but feel it's critical. Crucially important to have input from all five Board of Selectmen members when discussing important items such as policy setting. At this time, there are other important, high priority items such as marijuana with the meeting scheduled for both January 22nd and January 29th. We would ask you to please reschedule the policy meeting for earlier to mid-February. Thank you for your consideration. Caroline Calaruso Selectman and Thomas Busch Selectman. I had to respond. My response was, I spoke, I'm sorry, Deva is the one who sent this email out to reply to the board. And I spoke with Chairman Seabolt and he does not want to reschedule the policy meeting and has been rescheduled for 1/16, January 16th, 2018. You'd like me to remind you that the residents voted all you in and are accountable to them and that you should be leading by example. In addition, this meeting has been put off long enough and he wants the board to move forward with setting up strong policies that can be an example for other boards and committees. And the reason why we had to send that out, and I apologize, I couldn't, is that Selectwoman McNeil's been on for, going on eight months and she's been dealing, she's been, she comes from an existing board with policies. Policies and procedures have always been put in place and it's been put off too long, whether it's, you know, different excuses, we all can't make it and it just, I don't know, it's difficult if, it's almost like, we almost expect people to do as I say, not as I do, and I don't want that type of feedback coming back to this board. I want to lead by example and we have a core man, the three of us are here. We're not going to set policy that's going to be disruptive to the town or to our board or any other boards or committees, so. I came from a job where policy and procedure was the whole job. There was no gray area, so I'm well aware of it, but the longer we go, God forbid if something happens and everyone starts trying to point fingers, I just want to get this ball rolling, so. If anybody has anything else to say?
And I'm sorry because it may just be that I haven't been in front of my email a little while. Was that sent out to the board or was that something that was sent to the whole board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Today?
No, this was Friday. Friday after I received it, received it at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So, in getting that response from the BOS Secretary, I did ask that Deva express that if people can't make it, that they could send in their comments and concerns about the draft policy that I had submitted to them for review a couple of weeks prior. And I do have right in front of me, I guess, Selectwoman Calaruso did submit some comments for discussion, so we'll make sure that those. When she submitted that email, I sent that out to both Tom and Caroline and Caroline submitted her comments today. Right, so we can address those and bring those up tonight during our discussion.
So, we do have comments?
From Caroline, she submitted them today. Yep.
I mean, I.
This is the first I'm seeing them right here.
She, I just got them, so.
Yep, so we can incorporate those.
Oh, that's what this is?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we can incorporate those. If I could just continue, if you don't mind, so when I first got on the board of Selectmen back in April, it wasn't very clear to me what our policies for operating really were. We had several discussions, they're not listed on the town website. The policies that I was given a copy of a couple of months later was sort of an old policy book, it seemed a little choppy, but I thought there was some good stuff in there, but it looked like it needed to be updated to include, you know, the idea of electronic communication and some other things, just to make sure it's cohesive. So, I had looked at a variety of different towns, I did base this draft off of the town of North Reading. It seemed fairly simple, fairly complete. There were some tweaks and changes that I thought, you know, we could make to sort of make them our own. We did send it off, I requested, or I sent it off to our town council for his review and he has submitted his sort of red line comments back to the board for us to take into consideration when we have this discussion. I do think that it's important, we do have an election coming up in April, I think it's important for any new member, when they're, you know, new to a board, to be handed a policy book. It should be very simple for the residents of Stonem to be able to go onto the town website and say, how do they operate? I just, I think that that's, if you don't have that basic foundation, it leads to a lot of other things. And in doing some further research, and we can sort of go through this whole draft, but it appears that much of the sort of stuff that's in this policy was adopted by this board unanimously last March, although I've not actually seen it sort of written out. So, I think what we can do is sort of look at those meeting minutes, make sure that the intent is the same because a prior board has actually already voted unanimously to accept much of what I sort of incorporated in here. And we can sort of take it from there in terms of a discussion, but I do think that it's important, you know, we've been trying to schedule this for many months. I think the initial email went out even early December to try to get dates. So, it's unfortunate, we all have meetings, I'm actually, I'm missing a half of a class that I paid for tonight so that I could be here. So, we all have stuff, but if we're committed to this and this is our, you know, priority, I've been asking for it, you set a date and I agree to it. So, I think that, you know, we all try to do the best we can with the stuff that we have, we all serve on multiple boards between the Coalition, the Capitol Committee, I think Selectman Wilson was at a Capitol Committee prior to this, so, you know, I think that you may not be able to accommodate everybody's schedules and I think that you just have to take the opportunity to do things. And I do think it is important to get this done sooner rather than later, so.
Thank you. Do you have anything?
I was just going to say, actually, I'm very happy to see the written comments, though obviously need to read through them. I just was a little bit surprised that people were not able to attend today, just given the extent of the notice we received. And I was just looking to see if I could find the first request that you mentioned in December, but it's been on my calendar since December, I'm sorry, January 2nd. So, I know there's been some question about that. My, I really, I, we can debate this, I suppose, but I feel a little uncomfortable adopting policies without a full board. You know, we certainly can run through, I think, I did a lot of preparation for this meeting, I actually took that March document and merged it with the one that you sent out, just to see. I would describe, there is a little bit of overlap, I would actually describe them as quite complimentary in terms of the areas they cover where they're not, there are one or two sections that are duplicative, but the majority of them are additive, they make a good, better document. So, I feel like we could probably start to have some of that discussion, we will unfortunately probably need to meet again, I would think, to finalize.
Well, on the agenda, the way it was posted, it said, in parentheses, it says discussion and in parentheses, vote may be required. So, it's, like we said, we've had other meetings on the policy, so obviously, we work for the residents and other employees, some employees work for us, not everybody, some, so that's why I feel it's pretty important for us to lead by example and have these put into place and have a strong discussion if we decide to vote. Fine, if we don't, we can move on like we have in the past, we've had other meetings that we talked about policy, but we haven't taken a vote on. But I know that March meeting, I'd like that to be read because of the substance that's on that one, that we did discuss, so we don't duplicate it, I think that's, that would clear up a lot of things, too.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I know in the draft that I sent out to the board, it included language on dog policy and alcohol policy, while I know that town council did respond back with some comments on that. I do think it might be beneficial to not really discuss those policies right now, but maybe have our next sort of session on policy discussion be around, you know, maybe four or five other things, dog policy, alcohol policies, site plans, block parties, the things that come before this board that we may need to review. Because I do think this is something that as time goes on, as technology changes, as things change, I think that a policy is great, but you can't just put it in writing and then not revisit it, I think that policy should be revisited.
Absolutely.
You know, not necessarily every other week, but, you know, biannually potentially or even annually, just to do a quick review, just to make sure that what you're operating under still makes sense. Similar to the way we discussed reviewing committee assignments. So, I don't know how you want to work this, if you want me to read the policy as drafted.
From the one that you sent or the?
So, I never, so that's my question to you, is I never saw the actual written out policy, like I can read the meeting minutes, which discussed the policy, but I never saw a document.
I have the draft policy.
With actually draft, okay.
Do we have one that has any of the updates to it? From March? So, I have an electronic copy of the draft.
That's from March?
Let me see if this matches the draft or the, it looks like it's updated. There's one thing we all agreed on taking out, which one was that? Do you have multiple copies of this or just this one?
Well, just. We have copies made.
Just let me see if this is, looks like it's the, this is probably yours because it, this is probably updated because it has, you wanted the human rights statement in here?
Yes.
And that was not in the original, so this is the updated one. So, yeah, could we get?
Sure. I'll be right back, you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, that wasn't the original, or at least the version.
Which one? Thomas?
The problem is I just don't have, like, because it's not stored somewhere.
Right.
I don't know what the latest version was.
Right.
Is that the latest version, the one that you have?
I don't know, this is Martha's draft in the folder from March 7th.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming it is not the latest because that's the one we would have reviewed and there were comments from both of us.
Why don't I read what I sent out?
Sure.
And then we can take it from there.
And I'll, let me, give me a second and I'll put it up on the screen.
So, 1.1 is the policy book. All policies of the Board of Selectmen shall be compiled in a notebook entitled Policies of the Stonem Board of Selectmen. B, all policies therein shall be individually notated to show the dates on which said policies were adopted or amended by the board. C, at the front of the policy book, a calendar shall be maintained showing annual dates upon which various policies are to be enforced. D, the policy book shall contain a table of contents. E, chapters and policies shall be identified by sequential numbering or lettering. F, the policy will be posted on the Town of Stonem website and will be updated as changes are made. And G, new members will be given a hard copy of the most updated book within one week of their election. So, those are just sort of some basics, you know, making sure that a policy book is maintained, making sure that, I think, you know, having the annual dates for different policy enforcement issues in the front of the book just makes it easy, gives you a reference point and making sure that the annotated, you know, the dates on which things are updated, you can see easily as a resident or as a new member of the board where things may have changed and sort of at what point kind of gives you a reference for, you know, if you're looking at a policy book and the last date on it is 1989 and it's 2007, you can kind of guess that maybe it might, you might want to look at it again, just to check, to see if it's updated.
Would you like comments as you go through sections?
Do, would you want to do that? That might be easier.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any comments on these? And I don't, I think the.
So, Selectwoman Calaruso actually had a comment that was very similar to mine, though slightly different intent, which I think belongs in this section, which is, you mentioned having a notebook or having a compiled book.
Yep.
She mentions having it electronically on the website.
As do I, yep.
Of do you, I'm sorry?
Yep.
And then I just, I added to bullet A, compile, I said, shall be compiled electronically in a format that is easily editable.
Yes.
Because one of the problems we have is we find these books from years ago, but we don't have the, you know, we don't have an editable format. And so, electronically in a format that is easily edited and in a notebook entitled.
I think beside the change of date when the policy does change, whatever section it's in, whether it's 1.8.
Yep.
It should have the date revised, so if the main year on the book says 2018 and something happens six years down the road, revised on that just one section on the date, so.
Yeah.
It shows that it's, just that one area, not the whole book is revised and you have it in there, so I think having the date on it.
Right.
One of it is revised.
So. So, under E, Selectman Wilson, chapters and policies shall be identified by sequential numbering or lettering and in a format.
No, I was doing it under A.
Okay.
Compiled.
Compiled in a notebook?
Compiled electronically in a format that is easily edited and in a notebook.
Okay. And easily.
I can, so as long as we've talked about these, I think it's fine for me to send you the edits afterwards.
Okay.
So, you don't have to prescribe.
Are you doing it right now? From what Shelley said?
No, these are, these are my edits.
Yeah, okay.
They may not all be accepted, so.
And then, I think what you're asking for is in Section B, which is that the policies shall be individually notated to show the dates on which said policies were adopted or amended by the board.
Or amended.
Yep. So, I think that addresses.
Mr. Chairman, a question on B.
Sure.
When you say amended, are you going to, in the policy book, have the prior policy in like slashed out or not show that because, let's say?
I like that, Tom, because you want to see how it changed, correct? How the policy changed from one to the other. It's almost like you want to leave it in there and just have a sub off of that.
I don't know, it's a question to leave the board, because sometimes it can get confusing and then, but sometimes it's good for historical purposes.
Historic versions.
Could we keep, yeah, I would say, should we put in here that the secretary shall keep a record?
Okay.
A running, a running record?
A running record.
Yeah.
So that if anybody has a question, it's easily pulled up, but I think a clean copy of what's current should be given, you know, to newly electeds and that's what should be posted on the website.
I know it's correct, because there's some things I've been seeing here that it's good to have the history, but it's very confusing.
Right.
To make the determination of what is actually current.
Right, yep. I think that, yep, maybe a copy of each would be preferable. And so, under Calaruso, Selectman Woman Calaruso's, is this the number two that you were talking about? Her comments?
Yes, it was, no, it was number three? Yes, two.
Two, right? So, I'll just read her comments directly, is all policies will be compiled in a separately designated policy document accessible to the public via the town webpage and will include the date of implementation and the vote tallies of each policy decision of the Board of Selectmen, which, I'm trying left. All right. Should we move on to Section 2?
Yes.
So, 1.2, powers and authority. The power and authority of the Selectmen of Stonem is vested in the committee as a whole. Policy decisions are to be made at legally constituted meetings. No one person is to make a commitment for the entire Board of Selectmen unless so authorized by the majority of the board at a board meeting. So, that's a pretty basic thing, just saying that we're all members of the board and we need to, you know, act according to whatever the board vote shall be. And I don't, I don't know that any of. I'm not sure where number three of her comments should go, but it could go, three and four of this could go under this section possibly.
Yeah, four. All meetings at which voting on new board policies take place must include all five members of the Board of Selectmen and be televised on public TV.
Mm-hmm. That's fine, because it's not discussion, so I wouldn't want to limit a subcommittee from discussing or drafting, but actually voting on new board policies, it should be done. I would say, I don't know that I'd also say must include all five members. If I am sick and it's been posted and we've discussed it, I have no problem with people, you know, if I can't make it to a meeting.
I almost feel like if, like you said, if it's been discussed, I, you know, hopefully the ones that aren't here tonight or whenever, whatever board member can't make it, it's almost like they should have the homework to do it, watch the meeting, have, write down any concerns and bring it to the board when we do go to make a vote.
So, yeah, so the school committee, we always had several readings of a policy, so that might be language we'd want to include in this section, that a policy draft be brought forward, so it can get read once, you know, a change, the second, you know, have a discussion. You read it once so that you kind of read it into the record, so if the public has commented, it's almost like a notification. The second reading, you have your policy discussion, your third reading is when you take a vote. So, that way, you know, it gives members multiple opportunities to make comment, you know, it's not like it's a one-shot deal, so we could do ad language.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's, unless it's changed there, that was the way we did it in North Reading, was you had two readings. You had a first reading and then at your second meeting of the month or whenever you schedule it, you did the second reading and you did your formal vote.
So, two readings?
But that scenario, I think, is good because then if someone does miss a meeting, it actually addresses it in a very different way.
Right.
Because I was concerned, I was concerned, you know, we do have meetings where people can't attend and that type of thing, so what you're saying is addressing it a different way. We've got multiple meetings, we can, we can discuss and it's been announced before we take a vote. That's good. The 15-day advance notice, I was actually just looking, it was 14 days, so for this meeting, but that's, there are very few things we ever get 15-day, I mean, other than the fact that the calendar is published in advance, we don't know our agenda items other than more than two or three days.
Right.
In advance, so I just.
And plus 15.
I'm not sure that that's practical if.
Plus it skips a meeting. Meetings are 14 days apart.
Oh, right.
So, I mean, that really wouldn't make sense.
Okay. Yep, so.
Anybody have any?
So, maybe two readings include language to allow for two readings and initial reading.
And just by that nature, that will be an extended period of time.
That will be at least 14 days, which is close to the 15 request.
That seems to come close to addressing the concerns we have here of making sure that we just, you know, schedule something and shove it through, we've had multiple readings.
Okay. So, we'll add in that language. So, that's three and four. And I think because it says made at legally constituted meetings, I, as much as I think we should as a best practice always try to televise, I wouldn't want to be limited if something, if they weren't available or if something happened, I just wouldn't want to tie a board's hands like that. So, I think it is, it should be our best practice to televise meetings, but if it cannot be.
It's only tonight.
Yep. So, that is that. So, I guess we'll move on to 1.3. Board officers and duties. At its first meeting following town elections, the board shall annually elect the following officers, chairman, vice chairman, secretary. The duties of each officer are as follows. The chairman shall A, formulate meeting agenda in conjunction with the town administrator, presides over but also participates in all meetings and hearings of the Board of Selectmen according to law or procedures established in the policy book, acts as a liaison to the town administrator, other duties as established within these policies, and ensures that the board is represented at meetings with other groups or its ceremonial functions as required. Do, so there is, so I'll just, I'll finish reading. Vice chairman assumes all duty of the chairman in his or her absence and the secretary takes minutes of all meetings and hearings in the absence of the board secretary.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a technical issue, not issue technical question, it's up to the board, secretary or clerk? Just.
Yeah.
Clerk.
Does clerk sound like a, is it more?
Isn't it, you, what's the, I mean, is there a legal difference in any way?
It's gone both ways, it's, yep.
We've just, do we have a standard that we reference in our town?
I believe, isn't we field clerk?
Historically, I've dealt with clerk.
Okay.
I've heard secretary, but generally I've had it as the third person being clerk.
I'm happy to spend, doesn't.
But I mean, do we have anything in our?
Like in the bylaws?
In the bylaws, that reference secretary.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, there is something I want to bring up as a function of the clerk later on when we discuss this.
I'm not a stickler for those things, other than if it's mentioned one way in our bylaws, we should be consistent.
Okay, so as long as it's not, as long as it doesn't detract, we can change that to clerk?
I think we should be a stickler that we always have a secretary because we have a citizen's request from 2015, there was no secretary and then the acting secretary they didn't have in the room, so.
No, 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 this is secretary on the board.
That's what I'm talking about.
This is not the.
Oh, yeah. But it will just be called a clerk, not, it's, the duties are the same, it's just the title.
Okay, all right, but I'm saying the duties are the same because.
The duties are the same.
Like, when you were doing it the other night, we, it's, it's pretty important to have a secretary, I believe, or clerk on this board.
Yeah.
So, I was going to propose that the secretary also works to assure that, you know, we are keeping track, that we have agendas and minutes for all of our meetings.
Okay.
And that they're released in the proper time.
Have agendas and minutes?
Well, minutes, minutes, I guess.
Well, it would be minutes, not because the chairman's responsible for the agenda.
Correct, so surely we have meeting minutes that are up to date and released in the proper time.
While we're on this.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
No, Tom, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, while we're discussing the functions of a clerk, I was going to hold off until we got down to the section 1.13. Generally, I've had the executive session minutes being reviewed by the clerk annually and then recommend or not recommend to the board to release them.
Okay.
Vote, so, I mean, we can add that under the minutes for executive session, but generally it's also, I've utilized a clerk as that function.
It might not, I think it should be stated under the functions of the clerk.
Okay.
Okay, I had actually put that in a different section, but I think that's, if that's where you want to put it.
Only because that way, as you're elected to clerk, then you know what your.
Sure.
It's very clear under your job, sort of job description, what your requirements are. are.
Now, now I have one question. So we're going through this, and actually I, I just want to ask, I think we should do it this way. We had mentioned that there was that meeting from March.
Yep.
And I could try to bring in items to merge the two.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to go through it and just get feedback on this and then do that merge, or do you want to try to do both at the same time?
I think we can do it as, as, as long as it's not confusing and things don't get lost, I don't have a problem with doing that.
My concern is that it can get confusing.
Right.
Because I had a couple of things...
Well, then why don't we just go through this? There's really not that much more.
No.
So we can just go through this and then...
Perfect.
Move on. But I do think that Selectwoman Calaruso's item number one would probably fall under this section. So her comments are, I would like to introduce term limits of one year of the duration of any Board of Selectmen subcommittee, oh, subcommittee.
Yes, I was going to say, I think that's a different area.
Oh, never mind, no, that's a different area.
Sorry for the scrolling people.
Nope, that is a different...
Yeah, that's not...
I was seeing chairman, but no, this is about a subcommittee, okay. So I think we can, unless there's any conversation, any additional comments?
I, I think when we get to that, we can...
Okay. So 1.4, liaison assignments. The board will annually review liaison assignments. Said review will take place by the third board meeting after the town's annual elections. Liaison duties are as follows. To keep informed as to the activities of assigned committees, boards, and commissions. To establish a two-way flow of information by meeting periodically with assigned committees, boards, and commissions. Interview candidates for board-appointed committees, boards, and commissions, and make recommendations for said appointments to the full board. The chairman will serve as liaison at a minimum with the town administrator, town treasurer, town council, moderator, and finance committee. God bless you. Other liaison assignments will be made with committees, boards, and commissions as required. So, I don't know if anybody has.
So you, you have one more bullet in the draft that I received, which I also thought should be moved to a different section?
I didn't, I didn't turn with E, sorry.
So I think E is where that should end and F should be moved to a different section.
Okay.
There is a subcommittee section?
Oh, yeah. That was, we actually went through that.
No, there isn't a subcommittee section.
I don't think there is, but maybe we need to create one.
Because we actually did that a few months ago, didn't we?
Yep.
Actually, no, a couple of meetings ago, we actually...
Should we create...
Regular meetings?
After regular meetings, then subcommittee?
Sure.
Yep.
So we'll hold, we'll remove F for now. 1.5, regular meetings. The regular meetings of the Board of Selectmen shall be held in the hearing room of the Stonem Town Hall on the first and third Tuesdays of every month commencing at 7:00 PM. The date and place of any regular meeting may be changed by an order or resolve passed at the previous meeting upon the votes of three members of the board, provided, however, that said change in date will still provide for at least two regular meetings in each month excluding the month of August.
And then maybe put B in there for that, um, put B in there for that meeting?
One of the things I will comment on here in a communication from Selectman Bussey on December 4th, when we were looking to try to schedule this meeting, he mentioned that it is the board's policy to only meet once in December. I had only put once in the month of August is, does the board, I didn't go back to challenge that to look to see if the board typically meets twice in December or not. So I don't know if we...
Since I've been here for two December meetings that met twice, and I can say since I've been here, July and August, they typically meet once. If you need another meeting, then we schedule it.
So maybe add July to this, July and August. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't...
And I think, I mean, those are largely driven by need. The, the rest is ordinary business, but then July, August, even December is driven by need.
Right.
Excuse me, sorry. It is somewhat important for December for two meetings because you're the local licensing authority, and there's a number of cases where a license, for whatever reason, may not be ready for your early meeting, your first meeting. So you would have to either call a special meeting later on. So generally, most towns I've dealt with, it's been the first week and the third week of December.
So just leave July and August as the months where we typically would only meet once unless there is a need. Okay. So we just need to add the word July in there. And then, should we do make 1.6 a section on subcommittees or subcommittee meetings?
Yes.
1.6 or put 1.5 with a B or an A, slide F down there?
No, I think it's 1.6 because it's not, it's totally separate from liaison.
Right.
And then we can discuss...
So we'll put F, the board at a meeting will annually dissolve any subcommittees deemed inactive or no longer necessary as A.
Does, does that, so Selectwoman Calaruso's comment is really that the term of a subcommittee is one year?
Right, so...
Which nullifies the need to review. I mean, you would still want to review them for the, because this essentially says that if it, if it is in existence for more than a year, it should be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen.
So why don't I just read the language out loud? I would like to introduce term limits of one year of the duration of any Board of Selectmen subcommittee unless authorized by law, during which time a written report, if required by law, by bylaw or charge of the Board of Selectmen of the committee's findings must be submitted to the Board of Selectmen. The subcommittee may be reauthorized by the Board of Selectmen after one year, but no Board of Selectmen member may serve more than one consecutive term on any subcommittee which has authority over any financial appropriation, financial oversight, or other financial matters. The chairman will be responsible for compliance enforcement. So I think I, I can agree with that. I don't think that I would agree with limiting...
One year.
One year in terms of having authority over, like, if you're comfortable on the Capitol Committee...
So this was my question, the Capitol Committee is not really a subcommittee of, so I didn't, I didn't know what you meant here. The Capitol Committee to me is not a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Oh, but our financial subcommittee is.
Is.
Okay.
Right.
So...
But if you're, if you have a, let's just say the financial subcommittee goes on for a little bit longer, would it make sense to remove the representative from...
No. So, so in my mind, the reason I would say...
I actually like the language of, because we, we end up with these committees that exist, so I like the language of, of saying, it, it's very similar to yours, reviewing every year. We, we may want to, the only concern I have, let's, okay, let's say we annually review in May, committee is created in August. Does that mean it automatically expires the next August?
Right.
So could we combine the two to say that...
Well, it does say unless otherwise authorized, let's just see. I think we could use the language that she's provided and tweak it just a little bit.
Yeah.
So we could say...
Best of both words.
Yep. There will be term limits of one year of the duration of any Board of Selectmen subcommittee unless otherwise authorized by law during which time...
I don't know, is that a term limit or there will be a...
A limit.
It should be reviewed after one year.
There will be a limit of one year for the, for the duration?
Of any Board of Selectmen?
Why, why not?
We can, we can fine tune the wording on that, but...
I would say reviewed in one year because if one person is doing a really good job on that...
It's a separate, we're just saying, we're just saying that our subcommittees do not exist beyond a year.
Right.
Unless reauthorized.
I get you. My bad.
That's exactly what you want. Yeah, did you write that down?
Sorry about that.
Board of Selectmen subcommittees... Will be, will be authorized to operate for one year unless...
Or the, or, her language is the subcommittee may be reauthorized by the Board of Selectmen after one year.
Perfect.
So that, I think that's fine if we take the language submitted. I, I don't personally think that we should, I don't, I'm not a fan of term limits. I feel like the board has the ability to decide amongst themselves who should be on or off. So, so my concern would be, you have somebody who's on there, they have sort of a historical knowledge of what that subcommittee has done because they've been participating, and then in one year, even if they're doing a good job and the entire board thinks they're doing a good job, now they have to walk away from it.
So it's not a hard, it's not a hard limit, but there is nothing that stops, there's nothing that stops whether it's, someone is not reelected or whether it's, feels like there's a change in the board.
Right.
They could still vote, when they're reviewing, they could certainly vote to, to change members.
And we could say that an annual vote for members, for board membership shall be taken.
So lose the chairman will be responsible for compliance enforcement.
So what did you, so...
Well, you can leave that, but...
Just so we're, just so we're explicitly clear, the, what was the language we used? These are subcommittees created?
Subcommittees created by the board.
Created by the board, okay.
So the board shall annually...
Yep.
Vote on membership.
Perfect.
On board membership.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that's right, Tom.
I don't know if this could be added there, but this is just my own, I do like subcommittees to have formal charges.
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to include that or as part of a subcommittee's idea?
Subcommittees should have, have, so you wrote up the nice sheet.
Right.
Right, so subcommittees should have formal charges, is that the correct word?
Formal charge, former, formal, generally formal charge.
Formal charge.
By the Board of Selectmen, this is what they will be doing.
Clear, clear membership.
Yep.
And a, and, actually, this might be a second bullet, I think that's good. I think a second bullet would be, the subcommittees are to, are created to investigate a particular topic and report back to the Board of, or report back recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for action.
Okay. Recommendation for action.
Right, so they don't, they don't exist as an entity other than to recommend back, and that's, that's actually, that's not something specific here, that's just documenting what a subcommittee is.
Could we also put in there language that says a list of subcommittees and members shall be maintained on the website?
That would be great.
That way, if somebody wants to know who's on a committee, they don't have to go searching, like...
Meeting minutes.
The meeting minutes to try to find them? All right. So I think that is probably all for the subcommittee, which is 1.6. So changing special and emergency meetings to 1.7. Special or emergency meetings may be called by the chairman, and in the case of the chairman's absence, disability, or refusal, may be called by three members of the Board of Selectmen. Notice of such hearing shall be served on all members. The call, the call for said emergency meeting shall set forth the matter to be acted upon at said meeting, and nothing else shall be considered at such special or emergency meeting. Should we put, one thing I didn't put in here, which might need to be explicitly said, is notice of such hearing shall be served on, on all members in compliance with open, mass general, open meeting law?
That would be good. I do have one question. What constitutes a special or emergency meeting in the sense that we have meetings that are unscheduled all the time, but those are not, they are, I guess, special but not emergency?
Say something needed to be signed and voted, you know, didn't we have something like that?
The road race, the Melissa's...
No, there was something with the town that...
No, Melissa too.
Well, it's not, you will probably not have that many emergency meetings because the way the Selectmen's Act is set up.
Because you've handled most.
Example, two weeks ago, the town of Marblehead had an emergency meeting to declare a snow emergency. We declare a snow emergency by Mr. Grover and myself, so that's not function of yours. If something occurred, like a flooding issue or a building, you know, that's more of an emergency meeting.
Okay.
Something unexpected.
Yep.
I think we helped out, it wasn't the road race, it was, was Melissa and Dan running for the firemen, they wanted to come, and it was a lick of thing that we had to meet just to sign.
We've met, but those were all in compliance, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm saying if it's an emergency, it just...
It wasn't a regularly scheduled, we said...
But we have lots of not regularly scheduled meetings, I don't mean them as being emergency.
We'd have a separate meeting so we could sign, so they could have, in the talk.
But they were all posted and...
Right, but it wasn't a, we just needed, it wasn't regular.
Right. Yep.
Just a practical question, though. How do three members of the Board of Selectmen call a meeting? Meaning, is it just that they have requested it?
They would go through the Board of Selectmen Secretary to request it.
So is the implication here that any three members of the Board of Selectmen can just call a meeting whenever they want?
I think that any board generally operates that way, yes. I could be wrong, but I think typically...
For an emergency meeting, if they need to get something signed...
Like if something, like say, say the chairman's on vacation and...
They need something signed.
You know, is not reachable, or, God forbid, in a car accident or something happens.
Well, thanks, Shelley.
I mean, there is, I'm sorry, there is somewhat of a technical definition between emergency and special.
Mm-hmm.
Emergency is you can't do the 48 hour, for whatever particular reason, you can't do the 48-hour notice of something. Getting a license signed is not considered an emergency.
Okay.
It's generally a public health or a safety type of issue.
So should the compliance with, with, should the compliance language not be in there, would that prohibit it?
No, because that, emergency is defined under, under open meeting.
It is defined, right?
But it's very, very restrictive.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? I don't think council had any comment on...
I was just going to say I'd like to make sure that, you said you've already sent this to council, I would just like to make sure that, that council agrees with that.
I have his redlined comments in this, but yeah, I think anything that we do should be sent to council for review prior to the next meeting if we're going to vote on it. And obviously, sent out to the full board for final review. 1.8, notification, copies of the agenda, minutes of the previous meeting, and all pertinent information shall be delivered by email, mail, or courier at least 48 hours before the meeting, just what we typically do now anyway.
And just to note, I mean, so, policy, I think this is good. We do occasionally get, you know, someone submits an update to a site plan a little bit late, like we will get an update or something like that. I just want to, I think this should be the policy.
Give some flexibility, yep.
And, and quite frankly, I think we maybe should be a little stricter about it than we are. But there are, I think especially, especially when we're talking about people, residents versus our board, there is a little bit of leeway to this.
So should, instead of it saying in all pertinent information, we could say in as much pertinent information as available, or...
I think we're fine with this, I just, I'm, it's more that we all agree. I mean, I, if someone, if someone sends a site, if someone sends no, there's a site plan meeting and they send no information, we should not have that meeting.
Right.
But, you know, if there was, I'm going to make this up.
So...
They were going back and forth on something that, that was in the department review and resolved it before the meeting. You know, as long as it's not redoing the whole plan, I think we should accept that.
I would be more comfortable with removing the word "all" then.
Yeah, because Dave has actually brought some things in front of us after, we have a site plan, and things came in after the fact too as well.
Or maybe, maybe we say it is at the discretion of the board to, to accept items that are submitted late.
You can say that. I'm comfortable with just removing the term, the word "all." I mean, I think it's a very, it just, "all" to me means you can't vote on something unless you have all the information. If you remove "all" and you just say "in pertinent information," that gives you a little bit of flexibility and doesn't, as far as policy language, you know, you're not as limited.
Not that we're going to be bending, but I'm saying it would help the people coming in front of us.
Right.
I think it's working with whoever it is.
It, it allows for some flexibility, whereas if, I think your policy says all pertinent information, and you're bringing something in at the last final hour... information," and you're bringing something in at the last final hour, it's, I mean, I know it's kind of technical, but I'm nerdy like that.
I think.
1.9, the quorum, "A majority of the members of the Board of Selectmen shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business," which is three members. 1.9, the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Tom.
I know if I'm being too picky on this. Because we're unique, that the Board of Selectmen is site plan approval, a majority of the, if for one particular reason, just the three of you were here, technically, you could not grant site plan.
That's right, you need four.
So, so should we say, "Under quorum," should we just make note that for site plans, a majority shall constitute four or more members?
Or say, "Unless otherwise required by Mass. General Law," or town code.
Unless otherwise required?
Mm-hmm.
Required by Mass. General Law?
Or, or town by law.
Or town by law, okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, this brings up an interesting question, which I've debated in my mind for the past year here. It has, has occurred in one occasion for me, where I've had a five-member board, and two resigned simultaneously, and they did not fill those seats for a number of months. The fact that you're a site plan approval board, and you only have three members.
So that's not something that's required by general law, that's required in our bylaw?
Right.
So we might need to look at a potential.
It's different, it's different in different towns, yes.
Right.
So we might want to look at.
But that's true on any board.
So if we tweak that to the point where, if that ever did happen, see.
Any site, any site plan authority has that same issue.
Right, it's a much bigger tweak.
Okay, but I'm saying, but could we tweak it to the point where, if one person did resign, and we have four, then you need three?
No.
No, it's Mass. General Law.
Mass. General Law is always.
Really?
It's not that it's four, it's like a seven-eighth or something.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it has to be a percentage.
Right, it's, it's, I don't remember the wording, but it's not, it's not just a majority.
Right.
So what happens, like in Drake it, there's only three, three selectmen. Belmont, there's only, what, three?
It depends on if it was a site plan approval authority or not.
They might not have site plan authority, site plan approval authority, yep.
That's for a different time.
Interesting.
Interesting.
I'd be curious on that one.
All right, so 1.9, the agenda. "No item shall be inserted in the agenda for any regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen unless said item has been filed in the office of the board on or before 12 noon on the Thursday prior to the regular Monday meeting. And member items being placed on the agenda must have a short description of the issue, and whether or not a vote is required."
Wait a minute, Caroline did right on that one. Any member of the board should be able to place their agenda item on the meeting agenda.
Oh, yes, no mistake.
I actually brought that up last year.
Okay.
So, it got actually voted down, but I think it should, I think it should be that way, anyone that needs to put something on.
I was going to, slightly humorous, I apologize, I was going to say the same thing that was said in the meeting last year by the chair. I think there are circumstances where you would want to postpone a meeting, you know, you have a huge agenda, we've run into that a lot. I'm not saying that something would be refused from the agenda, but I think there are reasonable considerations that, hey, we can't get it on this meeting, but we'll put it on the next meeting.
Well, Tom and I discussed agenda items, and we both felt some items shouldn't come under the board, it should come under the time of the reports.
Do you want, do you want me to read the minutes from that meeting in terms of that aspect?
Actually, I did not look at that, I just recall from the unit.
I do remember seeing it.
Too many tabs open now.
Well, maybe since we hadn't run into this prior, why don't I just read the minutes from that meeting? You won't have to rewrite it, we can just cut and paste. It's just a casual punishment.
Those are not short minutes.
Well, I'll just read the part as it starts. So these are the meeting minutes of the March 7, 2017, meeting, and it starts under Agenda Item 8, Board of Selectmen Policies. O'Neill stated that, at the last meeting, she requested comments regarding the Board of Selectmen policies for open meetings, and that she incorporated the comments that she received verbally during the meeting from Sebold regarding the human rights statement and cellphone slash personal computer use during meetings. She stated that she received two comments on the policy and would like to discuss them. Sebold stated that he would like to make the human rights statement a statement and not a policy. Sebold stated that he was under the impression that it would be a separate statement and not a policy. Younger stated that it can be a separate statement that is voted and made as part of the board policy book. Sebold stated that he thought it would be a mission statement. Wilson stated that it is a general statement that happens to be made part of the policy book. O'Neill requested comments regarding whether the statement belongs in the policy book. Boosie stated that it could be put at the end of the policy book. Wilson stated that he would defer to Younger's vision of what he wants to be incorporated into the book. Sebold stated that he thought the policy that was distributed was a good start, but that there are many towns with good policies that the board should look at. O'Neill stated that the policy is just a starting point. Sebold stated that the board has a policy book from the 80s. Boosie stated that this is a working document, but that there isn't enough about how a meeting is actually run, and added comments on how the board conducts itself during meetings. Sebold asked if the part about conduct was for the selectmen or the audience. O'Neill stated that the part about citizen input pertains to citizens attacking the board. Sebold stated that he thought it seemed aggressive. O'Neill stated that citizens can address the board, but that citizen input cannot be used to endorse a candidate. That matters may be raised by a citizen, but if they require further debate, must be placed on a future agenda, so there is no open meeting law violation. And that citizens' comment cannot exceed five minutes, but that the chair can make it longer or shorter. Sebold asked if conducting a meeting pertains towards selectmen or the public. O'Neill stated that the section on conducting a meeting pertains to the entire meeting. Wilson stated that all comments and conversation must go through the chair, and requested to add that the chair should recognize selectmen and audience members equally, even if they have differing views. Boosie stated that there should be a section regarding board conduct. He stated that the chair, and only the chair, should recognize someone to speak, so that there is not chaos. If there is someone who wishes to speak, that person may be called to the chair's attention by someone on the board. He went on to state that only one person should be able to speak at a time and not be interrupted. Boosie stated that each selectman should be referred to as "selectman" and the person's last name. He stated that the selectmen should act in a responsible and respectful manner, and that the chair may call a five-minute recess if a member or citizen is acting offensively. Boosie went on to state that all agenda items are discussed by the board before public discussions, and that not all meetings are public hearings. O'Neill stated that the board should discuss items first, and if someone has something to add, and time permits, then the board will entertain public comment. She stated that some towns and school committee take public comment in the beginning, and she does not find that to be productive. Boosie stated that personal attacks should not be tolerated, and the chair can move that discussion along. He also stated that facts can be corrected at the next meeting, but that it should not restart debate. Wilson stated that he has trouble with who determines what is factual, but it would be a challenge if someone states that something is false, and then we cannot have discussion. Wilson stated that these are policies and guidelines, but if something is critical, we should be able to move to go outside of these guidelines. Boosie stated that any member of the board has the right to supersede anything in these guidelines. O'Neill stated that is always the case. Boosie stated that attacks on social media cannot be tolerated. Sebold stated that he is guilty of using social media if he does not agree and get enough airtime at the meetings. O'Neill, referring to the submitted written comments forwarded to the board by Sebold, stated that she does not abuse her power as the chair, and that she does not take hand or head signals. She stated that she wants to, wanted to make that clear to Sebold. Wilson stated that a motion should incorporate his comment that the chair should recognize people equally, even if they have differing views, and selectmen Boosie's written comments, except for the last two, about inaccurate statements and social media. O'Neill stated that this is a starting point, and this should build. Wilson added that the motion should state that these are guidelines, but do not supersede that a member of the board has the right to move to go outside the guidelines. Sebold stated that if a citizen had something to be put on the agenda, they used to always come in front of the board. Boosie stated that the meeting can go off the rails easily, but a member can move to place the issue on the next agenda, which I think is the part we need to discuss. O'Neill stated that some requests, requests could be outside of the policy or authority of the board. Sebold stated that if a board member wants something on the agenda, it should go on the agenda. O'Neill stated that it always has, unless the TA can handle the matter, or it is outside the authority of the board. Sebold requested that this be added to the motion. Boosie moved that the board incorporate the original policy document that O'Neill distributed with the following items, that the chair should recognize selectmen and audience members equally, even if they have differing views, that these are guidelines, but do not supersede the fact that a member of the board has the right to move to outside the guidelines, that Boosie's written comments, with the exception of the last two, be added to the guidelines, and that any member can request that an item be placed on the agenda, that the chair or the TA should let the member know the reason that it will not be on the agenda, and that strong deference should be given to addressing agenda items that have been requested. The motion was seconded by Wilson and voted unanimously. So we already have sort of a vote taken by prior boards on a lot of the stuff that's actually in this.
Why I think we should merge some of that.
So, the part that we were just referring to, I believe, would be this, that requests that if some, if a member wants something on the agenda, it should go on the agenda unless it is determined by the TA.
But there was also that language, "Strong deference," I mean.
And the chair.
Very strong.
Yep, and I think strong deference should be made, yep. So we can add that language back, you know, sort of into this.
For the most part, it should be. I totally agree, I just think there, I, you know.
Yep.
We have a, we have a five-hour meeting planned, you know, and could we do X in the next meeting?
Right.
You know.
So, so, any member of the board should be able to place?
I was just going to say, Ava, thank you for that, writing that up.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
So can we, so, the language should be, "Any member of the board may place items on the agenda."
May request items.
May request, yep.
Items on the agenda, a, a strong deference should be given to accept all items, or scheduled to.
Be reviewed by TAs too as well.
No, I was just going to say, scheduled, scheduled for a successive meeting if time does not allow, or something like that.
Yep. A successive meeting.
I think that was the consensus of that.
If time does not allow, but I think also, it does have to say.
Oh, based on the motion from the previous meeting?
Members' items being placed on the, no, I think it needs to say that.
Let me look at the motion, you write?
If an agenda item is requested, and the TA determines it to fall outside of the scope, that, I don't know if that's the right terminology.
Yeah, just kind of think of it a way, yeah.
Oh, I mean, we can read it from the motion that Mr. Boosie made, that the chair and the TA.
Do you want me to scan through and try to find it again?
The chair, it says the chair, yeah, guidelines.
Unless the TA can handle the matter, or it is outside the authority of the board.
Which is, okay, I mean, if that's the language that's in here, let's do it.
That's what, it says, "O'Neill stated that it always has, unless the TA can handle the matter, or it is outside the authority of the board." So, agenda items, strong deference shall be made.
Mm-hmm. Shall be given to all requests.
Shall be given to requests made by members to place items on the agenda, unless the TA can handle the matter, or it is outside the authority of the board.
And there may still be times that some of those come on, and we've seen, we've seen some citizen comments that are technically in the, in the realm of the TA, where we want to, we want to elevate them.
So we'll add that to this section, and then the requirement for the short description. I wonder if this should actually also say, so I don't want to get the short description when I sit down at this table, so I would say, "Member items being placed on the agenda must."
To be accepted on the agenda.
Yeah, to be accepted on the agenda must include a short description of the issue, and whether or not a vote is required.
Then I need to go back and talk to Ava about the item I just requested.
I'm sorry, Shelley, say it again to me. Okay. So, "Member items being requested for placement on the agenda shall include a short description of the issue, and whether or not a vote is required before being accepted." So that would deter from me giving you, you know, two words as an agenda item, with no backup and no description, and then coming to a meeting and being asked to vote on something that I'm not prepared to vote on as a, as a member. It's really mostly a courtesy, but I think it needs to be spelled out. 1.10, decorum and procedures. Decorum and procedure during selectmen's meetings shall be maintained by the chairman. In performing this duty, the chair will moderate according to the dictates of reason established by board practice and law. The chairman shall have the right of seconding, but not making motions. The chairman, after verbal warning, has the right to expel a member from the meeting if their conduct is unbecoming of a selectman. I know this is probably a little controversial, but I don't anticipate this actually being implemented. I would think, after being given a verbal warning, hopefully, any member on the board would recognize their behavior to be unbecoming.
Disruptive, yeah.
Disruptive.
Yeah, you can't.
And we could also put in this, expel a member from, or, either or guest, or.
Correct.
Or meeting attendee.
The wording that was used in the, a document approved in March, was more general to anyone, selectmen or resident.
Right, so.
And just, just as a reminder as well, any member, if, hopefully, this will never come into play, but let's say that it did, a member could certainly make a motion, another member could make a motion to request that that person stays. Again, from a bylaw perspective, that's what we're saying, we, this is our document, we all have the ability to, to make motions that, if we agree, we supersede.
Supersede, yep. So Chairman, or Selectman Boosie, in these minutes said, he stated that the selectmen should act in a responsible and respectful manner, and that the chair may call a five-minute recess if a member or citizen is acting offensively, so.
I look at this as almost like a climate issue. If there's a, if there's a climate issue that's going on, if you have a hot topic, I mean, common sense, we're all adults, it's not going to turn into that much of a horror show that we're going to ask people to leave, I can't see it.
I would hope not.
I really can't. This, this language is, you know, it's, this was North Reading?
Yeah. Well, no, this, D is not in the North Reading, I added that, because quite frankly, I've seen too much.
So, I'm just pointing out the, the minutes.
Unbecoming.
I'm sorry, the, the, the meeting, sorry, the policy that we approved in March says that the chair may authorize a constable or officer to remove a person from the meeting.
Right, so that was already.
So, it is already.
That was already approved.
Correct.
Last March.
You know, and it's something that we do not do.
Yep.
As a general practice.
Yep, but I think it's important to have that language in that.
I think a few years ago, someone was asked to leave, and I can't remember who.
Um, should we put in there, so, could you read that language one more time?
Um, I'll read the whole statement. If, "After a clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or officer to remove the person from the meeting."
Okay, that, that's a verbal warning, so it's very similar to what I, mine was a little bit more simple, but what the board approved.
Well, this one's broader, this is.
This is much broader.
Yes.
So, I think that satisfies me.
Okay.
We can just include the language that was already approved by prior boards.
So, you don't use this and bang them over the head and just walk them out?
No, no.
All right.
There'll be none of that, but I do think, you know, it's important that as, as the leaders of our town, that we refrain from poor language and slamming things and tossing stuff and.
Unbecoming.
Unbecoming.
Is the word.
That would be the word, so.
All right.
I couldn't think of any other term for it, but I'm glad to see that the board had already actually, uh, approved that.
Yeah, and that was partly why I asked about the merging, because there's several of those where there, there's, there's a little bit of overlap. I think they're mostly complimentary, but there is some overlap.
This was probably the biggest, this was probably the biggest word where I worked, unbecoming.
Unbecoming.
Of an officer.
Of an officer, yeah.
Of an officer was, hands down, it becomes your.
Yep. So, 1.11, uh, it would be 1.12, I think, minutes, circulation, minutes of the meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall not be circulated until after they have been approved by the board. It's pretty basic, I think that's how we operate now anyway. Minutes, action, the Board of Selectmen will act on the minutes of its meetings.
My only, my only caveat on that is, according to open meeting law, if someone does make a, a request, draft minutes do need to be shared.
Okay, so, we add in language?
Sure, you know, outside, outside of a, a.
Outside of open, outside of an open meeting law request?
Correct.
Okay. 1.12, oh.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, it is also recommended for any board, not just the Board of Selectmen, that the board approves the minutes of their last previous meeting because generally Attorney General's interpretation now is that, um, meeting minutes should be expeditiously approved at your next available meeting from the previous one.
So, um, under maybe 1.12 where it says minutes, action, um, it state, what I wrote was, "The Board of Selectmen will act on the minutes of its meetings as the first item on the agenda." We can put of its previous meeting?
If at all possible.
If possible.
Mm-hmm, and, and I'm sorry.
Previous meeting when possible.
I'm gonna.
As the first item.
One of the, uh, I, I, you added a sentence, you added a statement in there about open meeting law.
Mm-hmm.
And I just looked at my markup here, and I'm gonna change it because that's very specific.
Okay.
At the end, just put, "Except as required by law."
Okay.
Because then it's, if there's any.
Okay, approved by the board, except as required.
Right, after they've been approved by the board, except as required by law.
By law.
So, any, anything that would require us to release that.
Yep, makes sense. So, we'll include minutes of its previous meeting when possible as the first item on the agenda. So, I know that sort of changes the way our agendas look, but I think you're, you're just doing basic business in the beginning, and then you get into the meat of your meeting.
Well, it.
It's meant to sort of.
I don't even know who said this to me, but it made sense. You're essentially closing your previous meeting by approving the minutes.
Right.
And then proceeding on with new business.
And proceeding on, yep.
Well, that was me, I think.
Oh, it was, 1.13.
I think it might've come out of the, the meeting training we had with Mr. Galvin.
Um, minutes, executive session, um, executive session minutes are available to all members of the Board of Selectmen who are bound to maintain their confidentiality, and this was the red line added by council, until such meeting minutes have been approved or released by the Board of Selectmen as set forth, all of it. And then executive session minutes or sections thereof will be released in accordance with master general law, only when doing, only when by doing so, the lawful purpose of the executive session will not be defeated, and executive session minutes or sections thereof will be released only by an affirmative vote of at least three members of the Board of Selectmen. Yep.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'd like to recommend changing of at least three members of the Board of Selectmen to the majority of the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
In case there is executive session minutes that two members of the board cannot vote on.
Good, good point.
Yep.
I'll change that to majority.
And technically, it, would it be the, hmm, would it be the entire, if the entire board is here, so what, for what reasons would you not be able to, to, to vote? One is obviously proximity, you're too close.
Well, yeah, proximity, let's just say that.
Financialist proximity, but what, would you be voting on it if you did not attend the meeting, the release, I'm not talking about approving them.
You could abstain, is that technically a vote?
Hmm, if you're there.
Give me in.
At the meeting.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is the release separate from, uh, the vote to approve?
No, the minutes to approve are one thing, is you're approving the minutes.
Right.
And, but the action may not have been completed or.
But let's say I did not attend the meeting, I could still vote on whether or not I think they should be released. I mean, that has to be, it has to be because you can, your vote can turn over.
Yeah, it's, I just generally like the word majority.
Majority.
So, do we even need majority, but just say by an affirmative vote of the Board of Selectmen?
That'd be fine.
I think that's fine.
And, and just scratch majority or numbers.
Just a little clarification on this is, to a certain degree, why I'm concerned about the number of, of members, I once served on a Board of Selectmen that was five members, and two of them resigned simultaneously, and you had a Board of Selectmen that was three members for a number of months.
Right.
And number of their bylaws.
Prohibitive.
Have referenced the number.
Okay.
So, it's just, I'm a little.
Yep, no, that, that's.
Now, that would happen here, but.
But that's good to know. Um, so, the last section of that is, "All requests for unreleased executive session minutes will be immediately forwarded to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and placed on the next available selectmen's meeting agenda for resolution." So, I don't have anything else, I don't think.
So, I had executive session, and I don't, we talked about it somewhere else, but that we should be regularly reviewing the executives, executive session minutes that are unreleased. We did put something up in the secretary's section.
In the secretary's, yep.
But I feel like we should have it here, and I don't know what the appropriate interval is.
What about after approved by Town Council as well? Because Town Council has to approve the executive session minutes.
For release?
For release.
Yeah, but we'd be reviewing them before he'd be reviewing them, wouldn't we?
We would ask for his guidance.
Right, so I think it's.
But if we approve something and it gets released without the Town Council, we might get.
But I think quarterly, I mean, we could do a quarterly review of executive session minutes.
Well, I didn't know what the frequency was, is it?
I think quarterly would be.
Once a quarter, once a half?
Um, as far as releasing the records?
Just reviewing for release.
Reviewing them.
Maybe once a half.
I've generally seen it done annually, there's nothing wrong. Quarterly, there may not be much for you to review quarterly.
Okay.
But.
I'd say once a half, so it's not, because we did a lot of things.
I'm just saying, I just don't want to see somebody all of a sudden get like, "Here's the minutes," you know, "You have to review these," do you know what I'm saying?
If you don't mind doing quarterly, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the clerk's responsibility anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you send me the minutes, I review, it's every three months to go over stuff, I don't think that's.
I mean, really would be, what I, what I would like to see regularly is, what minutes do we still have?
Right.
And I'm assuming any release would be, would be a recommendation from the Town Council.
Right, okay, so, um, the clerk shall review.
The clerk is the secretary of the Board of Selectmen?
Yep, yep. The executive session, so I'm gonna say clerk slash secretary?
Yep.
Shall review executive session.
And just to be clear, that is a member of the board and not?
Yes. Shall review executive session minutes quarterly.
Or at least the list of executive session.
Yep, okay.
Can you not read through each one?
Um, 1.14, correspondence, general, "All correspondence requiring action or an answer shall be handled by the Town Administrator and reported to the Board. Copies of pertinent informational correspondence shall be given to each member. Other informational correspondence shall be available at each meeting in the correspondence folder and so indicated in each selectmen's packet." And then this is, oh no, this is under the next, no, she has a comment under communications, so, um, should we say, now that I've seen this, "All correspondence requiring action or an answer shall be handled by the Town Administrator and reported to the Board in a timely fashion?" So that we just ensure that, um, copies of pertinent informational correspondence should be given to each member, um, I don't, do you have any other comment?
No.
No, that's general.
Okay, so, 1.16, I think we are at, communications, "The Board shall communicate with the public by submitting articles relevant to Board Town Business to the local newspaper and post it on the Town website under the Board of Selectmen page at a minimum of once monthly. Members of the Board are encouraged to submit articles to the Chairman for review for this purpose. Discretion for submission lies with the Chairman. Board members are welcome to submit their own communications separately, however, it should be made clear in the first paragraph that the communication is solely their opinion and not a formal position or opinion of the Board. And no member of the Board shall go before any state agency or entity to represent the Board unless the Board has voted and approved of the action being taken. Any member that wishes to communicate either in letter, email, or oral testimony must make clear in their opening statement that they are offering their opinion and do not represent the formal position or opinion of the Board. Um, I will read Selectwoman Colerusso's comments, and then we can discuss further. I'm concerned about the communication policy recommendations submitted by Selectman McNeil with respect to freedom of speech in the First Amendment. The policy appears to discourage independent public discourse by members of the BOS and gives too much authority to the Chairman to suppress dissenting views. When members of the BOS make public statements that they are expressing, when members of the Board of Selectmen make public statements, which means they are expressing their own views, therefore, it is unnecessarily restrictive with regard to freedom of speech to require a mandate that members of the BOS include an explicit statement that the views expressed in any public statement are their own." So, where I have an issue, or part of the reason I included this, is we often see people come before, uh, different committees at the State House where I work, um, people will identify themselves as members of a Board of Selectmen and go on to state potentially their own personal opinion and not necessarily something that has even been discussed or brought before Board for discussion or vote. So, I, everybody has their own views, everybody has their own ability to, um, say what they feel, I just think as a courtesy, it is a good policy to request that if you're going to present your view, that it is made clear to the public that it is your opinion and not the opinion or formal opinion of the Board. So, that was sort of where my head was in that I wouldn't want somebody, uh, Selectman Wilson going to a committee or to a meeting expressing, um, uh, his opinion as a member of the Board, making it seem like it was the Board's formal opinion if the Board had not actually had a formal discussion on it.
And, oh, go ahead.
I, I will, I mean, obviously, I, I brought this up last year as well, and I know, I mean, Caroline would know it, I said it in front of her last time too as well, um, we've been trying to put in, um, a statement from the whole Board, and I thought it was, to me, um, helpful to the Town speaking about Storm, and Caroline, I went back and forth regarding this, she has her own piece every week. If she could just incorporate, this is, at the beginning of it, this is my, my view, because it does say Selectwoman Colerusso, and I know that's kind of, you know, to me, it's almost like, I mean, it's not like I, shouldn't say I take offense to it, but it's, it's almost, I don't want the people thinking that I share the same views as someone that has a weekly item, and that's why we wanted to start putting, um, what's going on with the MWA, every other week they have a meeting, I wanted to keep the public updated, so those are the things that I would like to stress, you know, I mean, and if there's a way that maybe we can suggest to her to start off by saying, "This is my view," or, uh, I just don't.
I, I suspect we'll be discussing this one again.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. She, she knows I'd say this in front of her too, so.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of split this into two different things. There's one, which is the, um, I believe, the suggestion of a weekly Board of Selectmen article, and the second is, uh, stating your, um, individual opinion versus a board opinion. Um, I, I just know, I, I mean, I have gone to many, um, boards and committees when topics come up that are of interest to me, uh, Planning Board or, or, uh, Board of Appeals or anything that's going on in town, and I make sure that whenever I stand up, I express that I am a member of the Board of Selectmen, that the opinions to be stated, opinions stated are my own, because I, I think that is, that is very important. We, we as a Board only have any authority as a Board, as a, as a vote of this Board, and individually, we are members of the Town, we might have the title, but we are members of the Town.
Tom, uh, no, you, Tom Boosie, um, he stood up, he was gonna take the podium because he wanted to speak as a citizen regarding why someone might just stay there, but he made it clear, he made it clear that he's speaking as a citizen, so I think the most of us get it, I mean.
Right.
And getting back to the paper, I have put, I have put a couple articles in myself, and I, on the top, put selectmen too as well, so, do we put it as a resident? I'd rather almost say, "I'm speaking as a resident," but the paper, they offered it to us as a Board, that's why I'm kinda torn on that.
But the, so, I'm sorry, I was gonna finish.
Sorry, I think.
You know, I take seriously concerns around freedom of speech, and I think we should run this by council, you know, what.
Yeah, this was run by council, actually.
Well, we should point, maybe we should point it out, just say, "Is there a way to word this that we can just make sure that it is not a concern?"
Yep.
Because it, I mean, in theory, from a freedom of speech perspective, I can stand up and say whatever I want.
Yep.
And, and so.
You usually do.
Thank you.
And that's, yeah.
But, but I mean, I, so, so I don't know where that line is, like, if I, if I want to say something that is unreasonable.
Right, and, and maybe.
Technically, I can, so I.
So, so, to this point, I think.
So, maybe it is more of an, an ask that people do that than in a formal policy, that.
I think it should be a policy, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna stand up and, and, or write things in the paper, you should make clear, if it's not something that has come before the Board, you should, in my opinion, make clear that, I'm, I'm pretty adamant about that, and, and I'm happy to adhere to it as well. I think where we could maybe have some flexibility is in terms of, you know, "Members of the Board are encouraged to submit articles to the Chairman for review for this purpose," and maybe discretion for submission lies with the Chairman, maybe discretion should lie with the Town Administrator.
So, this was the second half of this, and, and I love the idea of the Town, um, doing, uh, informational stories out into the paper of what's going on. Uh, I am slightly concerned that, you know, the, that the way this is done, it does give, um, significant authority, I don't know that authority is the right word.
Well, discretion.
But essentially, the Chairman is driving the agenda of those articles.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that would be.
So, should it be the TA?
I would love to see the TA do that.
Yeah, so we just change the language to the TA.
But then it's out of Board policy.
Yeah, but you, it, it's almost like, do you put it, then, that's where you get into that freedom of speech thing, and people, they might take offense to that, so.
Well, why don't we just scratch the whole discretion, discretion for submission lies with the Chairman, and we can just say, "Members of the Board are encouraged to submit articles to the TA for review for this purpose."
Then how, how's the TA?
So, the TA, and, and Tom's gonna say, "No, if someone has an opinion on something," and the freedom of information.
But, but if it's an opinion, well, if it's an opinion, then he can say, "You're welcome to offer this, this is an opinion piece, this isn't an informational piece, this is an opinion piece."
And then can you imagine that debate though?
No, what I'm saying is, then he can then say, "Feel free to submit this on your own. We're free to submit to the paper on our own."
Oh, absolutely.
We're free to submit to the paper on our own, we can submit whatever we want. As, as long as we say, here's a piece, that's my opinion, I'm submitting it to the paper. I can write it on my Facebook page, it's mine, I can, I can put it in, you know, I can write it on a flyer and hand it out if I want to. It's, I can do whatever I want, it's my, as long as I'm acknowledging that it is not the formal opinion of the Board.
I guess my, my concern is, we have, people in the Board of Selectmen tend to have very strong opinions.
Yep.
On different topics, and we do not always agree, and if you have, if we have a situation where whether it's we're trying to get something published through the TA, or we're, it's through the Chair, there, there will be inherent bias in that process of what is an opinion piece versus what is a story about town.
Well, informational piece.
Yeah.
Susan, do you have anything?
If you haven't had a discussion as a Board.
Can you come up? Sorry, no, sorry.
That's actually a whole nother good question.
Susan Keeler, 22 Butler Ave. If you haven't held a discussion as a Board on something that you want to submit to a newspaper, then in my opinion, someone submitting something to the newspaper on their own is submitting it on their own. Is that right?
Go ahead.
So if you haven't had the discussion to submit it, then that person can just assume that they're speaking for themselves, right?
Yes, except that the general public doesn't know that, so if you're not keeping up with.
So it's stated that way.
Right, so if you're not keeping up with meetings, and I, Shelley McNeil, put out a big piece on, say we hadn't taken a vote on marijuana, and I put out a big piece on marijuana. People reading that, if they hadn't been following our meetings, may misconstrue the information that I am representing the opinion of the full Board.
Right.
So.
Actually, that particular thing did happen.
Oh.
Not you, not, but I mean, there were, there were articles about marijuana, and people, before we had actually discussed it as a group, people said the Board of Selectmen, you know, had this opinion, and it was based on, and, you know.
So if you had in your guidelines that you couldn't submit something to the newspaper without clarifying that you're submitting it as your own person.
Which is one of the, one of the two things.
That's one of the, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Right, yeah, that's what I wanted to include.
Okay, that's what I.
And that is being questioned, is from a freedom of speech perspective, which is why we said, let's have Town Council just make sure whatever we do is, is correct on that side.
And also, I think I read in either the social media policy, or something that the Ethics Board put out, that you're supposed to say that you're speaking as a private citizen.
That is true.
That is true.
When you put stuff out there.
Yep.
Thank you. Why, how, how high would it be to, if you do submit an article on your own, just saying, I am speaking on behalf of myself, not the entire Board?
I think, I think we agree, just getting the right language in the.
Before you start, that should start the article, though, if you have something in the paper.
Right.
That's what it should be.
And as far as the articles, I was just trying to encourage participation, so I don't know, maybe we can just say, Board members are encouraged to, I mean, we can take, you know, take all of the sort of limiting language out, and just say that the Board is encouraged.
But it's, my, my problem was with it being under the, the title of the Board of Selectmen in the sense that we're, we're not gonna vote on an article, so then how does something go out on the title, under the title of the Board of Selectmen?
Mine, mine says, an update from the Board, community update from the Board of Selectmen.
Which is a little different, because it's not, I mean, I think that's more, you've asked David to sort of summarize meetings and such like that, that's more of an administrative thing, as a, as opposed to you have sat down and put together an opinion piece, but then represented, even, even if it is an informational piece, informational pieces are usually.
They have opinions.
They have opinion.
Absolutely.
And, and I mean, I can, I don't wanna cite specific examples, because it just starts up.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I hear you.
But, but the, the main thing is, it does not, the, the chairman does not have any authority on the articles, because that would end up becoming an issue, because, you know, I mean, I, if I'm saying no to every single one, that becomes a, you know, an issue, so.
So I don't know how we address trying to communicate better.
Maybe we should, maybe we should hold off on this one.
We could, as a Board, you know, have a vote to say, to ask whether we assign it to one of ourselves, or, or a town to say, you know, we would love an article on the upcoming town meeting, or we would love an article on, I mean, we could, then it's a vote of the Board, but that's.
He's writing it.
Actually, the, the town moderator put one out last time, she put, you, you put a beautiful article.
She's not on Board.
Right.
No, 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 but I'm saying, that's a town meeting, but that's our job.
Mr. Chairman, one of the other things we could do is, we could request that each, so we get sort of the annual statement in the town meeting booklet, but maybe it's something that we could do, maybe we could have a department highlight, so maybe, maybe ask our department heads once a year, by the time you divide it all up, to do a piece on sort of a, an update from each department.
Yes.
So that they're communicating, not just at town meeting, but sort of throughout the year, different boards or commissions are, so that it's not coming from us. So that's, that's another.
We had Erin, our town planner, write a few, our Board of Health, write a few.
I know that's what you've been doing, but I'm saying we could sort of formalize that as a policy, that, you know, once a month, you know, a different department head shall submit an article. And that way, it takes it off of us, but it gets the information out there from a department head's perspective.
Gee.
I think there's, I think you have two issues going on, quite frankly, and I think, if you're gonna write an article, and we always did in the school committee as a policy, that we took a vote, that the Chair, the letter would go out under the Chair's name after it was written, and everybody saw it, and everybody could add. So I think that, that's kind of a quasi thing within that policy, or an article. When I tried to do a town meeting last year, and I was eighty percent successful, because I forgot a couple, but I was trying to get our committees in town, the Historical Commission, Historical Society Committee, the Greenway, to come up and give a two-minute little blurb on what was happening, because I think it's important for those volunteers, so if you run out of articles, there's another place, if the paper's gonna give us that space, that if we could try to do that and get all the committees, the farmers market, what they've done, or their schedule, I mean, I think they do that anyways in their normal course of, but I, I think it, it just brings the community back to a focus point of, you go through all the departments, then you go through all your subcommittees, and it kind of, just kind of brings everybody into kind of the same focus.
I agree, there's, there's so many, so many committees.
Phenomenal people out there doing a lot of work that don't get, and, and, you know.
That should be recognized.
You know, the first meeting I had, I was a bit nervous, I, you know, I'm not saying I wasn't, but, you know, I did forget a couple of people that I tried to make up for later, but I, you know, I'm gonna try to do that every May, give everybody a little bit of a, you know, a, you know, heads up to people who get a little cheering, because most of the time, they don't get cheered. They do a lot of work for all of us, so, I mean, I think that's, that's another place that you could find some, some content, but I think, I, I think that would be a great thing for the, the departments. I said, they're going through their reviews right now, and I think the Finance Board has gone back to having formal reviews with each thing, which is very encouraging to me. So I just wanna put my two cents in about that. But as far as somebody writing something, in the school committee, we always took a vote as a, as a group.
We did.
And that was, and that was my thought on this, I mean, I love the idea, I just was worried about it from a, how, how that, how it's done practically.
Alan Mc, Alan McBrady Butler Ave, thank you. I have a suggestion, what you do agree on as, as a Board of Selectmen, maybe in the paper, but also on the website, and then people will know, this is the official word from the Board of Selectmen, so, just my thought.
Yep. Yep. So maybe we can work on some language.
I don't know, yeah.
That.
This one's gonna be tweaked.
Yeah, this one I think needs, yes.
It's gonna.
But I, I'm.
I think your point two is, is what we need for now.
Right, and then maybe we'll remove this, and we'll talk about doing maybe a department, department.
And then point, point two, which is now point one, will, will be reviewed from a freedom of speech perspective, just point it out.
Yep.
I certainly do it from a common courtesy perspective.
I'm sorry, you're removing one and leaving two, making two number one? Correct.
Yeah, well, it'll default to one when you delete.
And, and we're gonna ask council to review all these changes anyway. Meeting procedures miscellaneous, and council did have additional language in this. A miscellaneous item will appear at the end of the agenda at least twice monthly, however, will be sufficiently described under that heading to meet the requirements of the open meeting law, so.
However, could you?
This was council's recommendation.
Yes, I just didn't, because it's not, I was trying to read along, and it wasn't there.
However, will be sufficiently described under that heading to meet the requirements of the open meeting law.
I would need more detail from him on that.
So, right now, our agenda just says miscellaneous.
Correct.
So.
And a lot of that is used for announcing events coming up and stuff like that.
Right, so maybe we should ask whether or not it should be called miscellaneous, or whether that should be called new, new information, or announcements.
I think his point, and I, because I've, I remember this coming up at our training, I think his point is that we can't use miscellaneous as a time to debate items.
Right.
So we should confirm this with him, or certainly not vote, but even, but even discuss items.
Because they haven't been listed explicitly.
We could, we could, for example, request something be added to an agenda.
Yep.
We could, I'm assuming announcing activities going on in town would be fine.
Yep.
So we, we, maybe we should get a better definition of what can go into miscellaneous, because.
And maybe define it under this policy.
And define it under this policy.
Yep.
Because I think he's, I think the point that he's making is it cannot be used as a catchall for things that you didn't announce above in the agenda.
Yep.
Generally, like, if you're categorizing like new business or miscellaneous, what that is, is generally, and you are all correct, is someone bringing up an item for a future agenda, but not to be discussed at that time.
What about bringing up something like, oh, there was an issue with the most recent snowstorm? You know, it's not.
So there's more language to this, if you want me to finish reading it.
Sure. I do have a comment on it. Can I, can I make my comment on it?
Yep.
So you, you had said at least twice monthly, but we have already stated we may not have meetings twice monthly, so I think the intent would be, we have a carbon email function, I think the intent was at all standard meetings.
Sure.
Regularly scheduled meetings.
Yep.
So the rest of meetings, procedures miscellaneous, the members will be restricted to approximately five minutes in which to relate the miscellaneous items to the Board, attendant, which I think was also mentioned in that March 7th, about limiting to five minutes.
Counsel had a comment on that one.
Under the five minutes?
Yeah.
I don't see that redlined.
It says not all items should be limited, unless everyone is limited, and then there will be topics that will be, that will take longer.
Oh, how come I don't see that? Oh, interesting, that didn't print out on mine.
Sorry.
So that was actually part of, that was part of the old.
That was from me.
Okay.
Because generally, historically, I've had limiting it to five minutes, because if you're going beyond five minutes, it generally ends up being a discussion, discussion of an item that was not on the agenda.
Right.
And if you're going beyond that, it really should be an agenda item at a formal meeting.
So, so, and that's, so our, the following language says, attendant discussion to miscellaneous shall be limited by the Chair to no more than five minutes for any single item. Topics requiring more than five minutes discussion will be placed on future agenda as the priority requires.
I mean, based on, based on the description, I think once we talk to Mr. Galvin, based on the description, we won't even need five minutes, because it's gonna be.
Right, it's gonna be limited to, in scope, yep.
Right.
And then I think we should end it there, he did have some comments on dog complaints and alcohol licenses, but I think that that can be done at future policy meetings.
Oh, no, just question, Mr. Chairman. This is more historical, and if you don't mind, I don't mind asking the three members there. I've rarely had dog complaint issues in my career. Have we had dog complaint issues in Stonem over the years?
We, not, of the type that is implied here, very few. We certainly have dog complaints.
No, but I mean, history of restricting a, a dog, or sending them out of town, or something like that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know about Stonem, but I know in my job, we have had several communities who, people have come forward, and it's been up to the Board to determine whether or not that dog needs.
Oh, no, that's correct, I'm just going through a history lesson.
Yeah, so I know that in other, in towns that I've dealt with, they've had to have those kinds of meetings. I don't know historically that we ever have.
But I think we can come back and revisit that.
Oh, no, it's great to have that in there, I was just wondering.
But I think it should be included, yeah. I, I don't think we need to go over it tonight, but.
I think if you want a history lesson, you need to talk to Jeanie.
So that was pretty much all I have, I don't know if anybody has any additional items, but.
I do, I, you know, sorry. Cell phones. I, I brought it up last time.
So, so I was actually, so where I was just going was, do we wanna take a look through and, and the one before, and make sure that we have incorporated the items?
That's fine.
Yeah, because we don't have social media policy in this either, so I think if.
The social media policy is a separate policy of the town, that's not specific to the Board of Selectmen, we could incorporate one for the Board of Selectmen.
Let's wait for the whole, I mean, that's something.
But we are subject to the town's social media policy.
It should go under the communication, so should the town's social media policy just be implement, put under our communications section?
If we could just reference it.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Just so that people, so if you're reading this, you know that we have a social media policy and what it is.
But technically, all.
All town, yes, but I think it's still good just for the general public to reference it. I assume that whoever's reading this has no, zero base knowledge.
Okay.
That, when I write a policy, I try to assume that whoever's reading it has zero baseline.
So I thought I had pulled this over from the, from the other policy, but apparently I added it in at the top, I put it as section before powers and authority. Do we wanna state that I have, as section 1.2, organization, the Board of Selectmen will reorganize and elect officers in the month of, we do it in the month of April, for the following fiscal year.
What are we referring to?
That we have a whole elections in April.
So this is, so under.
We elect our officers.
Well, it says Board officers and duties, that at its first meeting following town elections, the Board shall annually elect.
Never mind, I don't know why, yep, perfect.
So is cell phones on that, on yes?
Is that going to decorum and procedures? Cell phone policy?
Pull up the policy document from.
I think, I mean, this, this to me is.
To me, that's decorum and procedures.
Okay. This one is, one, cell phones should be put on silent mode during the meeting, citizens must take all phone calls in the hallway. Board of Selectmen members should be respectful of phones used during meetings, excessive use of phone is not allowed, however, Selectmen may use other features of the phone, including calendar, notes, internet, to access agenda topics or relevant documents stored in the phone. Selectmen are asked to refrain from texting, email use, and telephone use during a meeting. If the circumstances arise where a Selectman must prohibit phone features, they are asked to exit the meeting to do so. Board of Selectmen members shall not communicate with each other via email, social media, text messages, et cetera, during a posted meeting. I talked to, Tom, can I ask you something? I talked to another town administrator regarding this policy, and they, they strongly, they do, he felt strongly about not having cell phones during the meeting because of the possibility of texting, and whether someone from the audience is texting, and the excuses could be, I'm on the internet, you know, scrolling and stuff, but I, putting all that stuff aside, I know we have modern technology and all this stuff, and people using, I look at this as, we're elected, and I can't see why we. using, I look at this as, we're elected, and I can't see why we can't give the public and the residents undivided attention for however long this meeting lasts. That's what, I feel, Anthony, you're on the computer, you have all the access that we need up here, so it's...
So...
To, to, to me, I, I would just, almost null and void, I mean, it just, it, very disrespectful.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, this was pretty much, I believe, the policy that we had in the swamp scar regarding cellphone use, and it was not to be, not to use the cellphone during the meeting. What does come up, and this is what you may hear of a somewhat of, an argument here, or disagreement, is let's say I'm using my phone call, my phone cellphone to look up a mass general law, or something that is appropriate to the meeting. It's, it's somewhat difficult to determine, determine if I'm here doing this, am I looking up MGL chapter 138, or am I doing something differently? It's, it's a difficult...
Oh, it's a touchy subject, I get it, but it's just...
Mr. Chairman, I think, I like, I like that, and add, I think that could be added in under decorum and procedures. So, I think that...
This is the previously approved, I mean, we can grab this, if, if, I don't know if we're talking about changes.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, just plunk that right in, but what if we put on number five, where, you know, maybe under three, that if the chairman, the chairman will recognize, or the chairman may address excessive cellphone use during a meeting? I, I don't know, I mean...
I just feel like we're complicating it.
It is, and then that, that turns into a, you know, you might be, um...
Well, as long as it's...
You know, not, not, not being fair, but if someone else in, whether someone else on the board sees, because sometimes, you know, I'm looking forward all the time, if I'm the chairman, and, you know, I, I don't see everything that's going on, but if other people on the board see something that's going on, I think it should be addressed. Again, it's just a respect thing to the, the public, that's all I, all this other stuff, I get it, it's, you're covering your bases with the mass general laws, all that stuff, but you can do that all night long, and I'm, I'm looking, and I get it, Tom, believe me, I, I get it, but it's almost like, I, I really can't.
Well, as long as we have a policy, as long as we include this in our policy, if somebody's abusing it, the public knows it's part of our policy, and they make, and they can make a determination as to whether somebody's abusing the power, or abusing the use, and, and, you know, they can make their determination at the ballot.
Okay.
But I do think, I think it should go under decorum and procedures.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, we'll add cellphone policy to that, okay? What else was there, Anthony?
Uh, I'm sorry, let me find that. We already incorporated language around members placing, I, I think I grabbed the language from here on members placing items on the agenda, but I think we already did that in our discussion. I was, under decorum, just grabbed one of the lines from this document that said, while differences of opinion should encourage dis, should encourage discussion, personal attacks will not be tolerated, and the chair has the right to halt debate if personal attacks occur.
Yep, I like that language.
Uh, let me see if I can find this one, because it's a whole section.
See one here during the meeting, not all agenda items are public hearings, and it's, it is the discretion of the chair to allow public comment. I try, I try to make every agenda item public comment, because people take the time to come down here. I mean, there has been a couple that I haven't, and, mm, I felt so if it's down with finance and, like, I should have, I mean, I have slipped up on a couple, but I, I think that should almost be, everything should be a public comment, because people take the time to come down to our meeting, so it's, I don't see why we can't have the public's input.
The other thing that I think should also be included under, from the March 7th, which is not explicitly stated under decorum and procedures, was that everybody shall go through the chair?
Yes.
I think that language needs to be explicitly restated, so, um, that the chair, and only the chair should recognize someone to speak, so that, should recognize someone to speak.
That's the section I'm trying to find, I'm looking at it in here, but I'm not...
It's under conduct during a meeting.
Perfect, okay, I don't know why I... Oh, that's slightly different language.
But it does not say, um...
That was, that was, this, you know what, this must be, this must be one...
That's an old version.
This is an old version, that's why. Okay.
I think the printout's updated.
Well, I was just trying to put it up there for people, so...
Yeah.
I don't know why, oh, you know, David, you must have sent one out after it, after it got, because they obviously had an electronic version, so yes, the chair and only the chair may recognize someone to speak, this includes board members and citizens, no board member may call on someone to speak, maybe I can put this up there, hang on.
Can I, um, can I bring up something, because I, I mean, I'm guilty as sin about this one. Board members shall refer to one another as selectmen slash woman. I'm always doing Rocco, O'Shelly, Caroline, Anthony, Tom, I mean, I mean, I, I...
Straighten out.
I, yeah, no kidding, I, I apologize, but... I know, but I, I am very guilty, and I...
So, the, these are the ones that...
Shouldn't have.
So, I was gonna propose that we added this...
Yes.
That we add this in, obviously, me.
Yep. So, 1.1 can go in under decorum.
Well, it's not 1.1.
It would go in, that 1.1 shall be inserted under decorum and procedures as well, yep.
Apparently, we're all named Smith according to this.
Yes.
Yeah.
An alternate reading of that sentence.
Back in 1725, they probably were.
Very close to it.
I was just noticing that the, the chairman has the right to second, which I don't think is a practice we do today, I don't know that I have a problem with it.
Anthony, that's not from March, because one from March is numbered, not lettered.
Yep.
That was probably me that changed that, to fit it into this document.
Oh.
We should put that in, selectmen are not allowed to change numbers to letters.
I, I apologize, I would accept the one that is officially from March, just so there's no confusion. I was trying to put something up, I was ignoring his comments.
Sorry, that was kind of funny. So, what was it, that's, that the chair cannot, that the chair can...
Let me just make sure it's in here.
So, the chair cannot make a motion, but the chair can second?
Second, yeah.
Yes.
Well, it's almost like, if, if, if I just wanna slide it over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we generally have not practiced that, I don't know what...
More like, we should, we should keep it the same, we should keep ours the same.
You just did, you just did it.
No, but he just said...
No.
We don't do that usually, but unless I slide it, oh, yeah, because I can slide it, slide the gavel over and second it, yeah, so technically, yeah.
Okay.
So, you're adding that, or you're not adding that?
I believe we are.
Sorry.
This?
We're adding that the chair can second?
On Robert's rules, you can't?
Pass the gavel, right, that's, that's what I'm saying, I can second if I pass the gavel, right, right?
Yep. That's what you have done in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it'll make a motion.
But you're, you're taking one through six under conduct during the meeting, and putting it in your procedures.
I'm sorry, read that.
You're taking the one through six from the March meeting and putting it in your procedures.
Under conduct, and, under decorum and procedures, yep.
Let me see if there's anything else. Do we want the citizen input section?
Citizens' comments, citizens' input.
I mean, again, we did approve these before, so I would...
I would, I would say so, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that going under agenda?
I would say meeting, correct? Where were we on that one?
Technology, I would tell you, when we decided to freeze.
Meeting procedure? No, that's miscellaneous. Let's see.
I, I think probably under agenda.
I would say the agenda, then, yeah. No.
It would just say, what was it, that public comment will be included in every agenda?
Regular meetings.
No, we're talking about the citizens' input sections, bullets one through five, right?
Yeah, but wouldn't, but wouldn't you put that under regular, regular meetings?
Yes.
One, one...
I can't, I'm sorry, I have an issue going on over here.
Oh, oh, I'm looking at the wrong document, sorry.
The new one, citizens' input, being put under 1.5.
Office has decided to hang.
If I, if I may, I would do it under agenda and say, um, and just have it...
This one's saying that how you are putting things on the agenda, though, doesn't have anything dealing with the...
The actual, no.
Actually, during the meeting itself, so...
So, under regular meetings?
Regular meetings, because that's when the citizens' comments and the citizens...
It applies, it applies to all meetings, not just regular meetings, though.
So, why can't we just put...
One, put 1.5, and then he's on, he's beside it, I mean, that...
Yeah, I think just under regular meetings, that's actually where I had put it, and who else, no special meetings, can we add to our agenda?
I'd keep it under meetings, it wouldn't be under special, because if we have a special meeting, it's dealing with us probably signing something, I think.
So, how about this? Why don't we just take the word regular out of the title?
Okay.
Under 1.5, just put meetings, it says about the regular meetings, and then we add in citizen input under there.
Perfect. I'm gonna just make sure there's nothing in there that wouldn't apply to other meetings.
Correct.
Now, do we bring up what we voted on, because this is obviously the start of our policy, the use of video or audio recorders, citizens are permitted, permitted to record board's local meetings after properly informing the chair. That's another thing that I've never done, is ask if anyone's recording right now.
I would just ask for that guidance from Mr. Galvin.
Yeah, in turn, yeah.
Technically, technically, in the, technically, in the state of Massachusetts, it is law that you have to notify people if you are recording.
If you are recording.
I do think, I mean, what we really should do is just have a sign on the door that says, you know, if you're in this room, it can be recorded.
Please inform.
Well, no, just if you're entering this room, you can be on film.
Correct, actually, if you're entering this building, you can be on film.
So, if you don't wanna be, yeah, if you don't wanna be on film, don't enter the room.
To me, that would be the proper way to deal with it, but technically, you're supposed to notify people when you're recording.
Yep, we get notified of all, anybody who wants to come in to record, even at the State House, we get notified for committee hearings. If somebody wants to sit in the audience and record, they notify us.
Okay, so then we should probably include this.
Yep. I don't know that you need to read a statement before every meeting, but maybe we should inquire with counsel in terms of proper signage.
Right. Because this is more generally, when you're, years ago, when you really weren't having cable coverage...
Right.
It was more that somebody would come in, in either put a tape recorder...
Right.
I'm dating myself.
Right.
On the front. It goes along with the cassette player and the right track, on the desk, or somebody would actually bring in a video camera.
Yep. All right, I think that, I mean, I think we've basically covered...
Both, really.
You accepted, right, that we've basically merged the two now.
That's good.
And, and I would also just ask that we also continue to include the human rights statements.
Yes. That's good. Very productive.
Okay.
Moving on.
So, I think the next is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, then, so the next step is, this will be sort of redrafted...
Bite them all, Deva. Imagine.
Sent to all members in its new complete form, sent to council for review, and placed on the agenda for our next meeting for a vote.
For a vote.
Hopefully, that addresses concerns and such, okay, good.
As in Tuesday, or as in the next meeting?
No, it's, it's, I would, no, it's not gonna be ready.
So, February, first meeting of February?
Yes.
After it's reviewed by everybody, yeah. Yep. Anybody else have any more comments regarding policy?
I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Shelley, great job, nice job on that.
So, we have one other agenda item?
Yep, this is the timeline for warrant articles, submissions for Maytown meeting, this is the discussion, and this is, um, Tom, obviously, we don't have a town accountant in place yet, so...
Uh, he'll be starting on two, on Monday.
Right, so, and this is...
Mr. Regal's been doing a, a good job, very good job, as, as...
Okay.
In the capacity.
The, the cutoff date was supposed to be January 21st. I would recommend we post, we move this to February 21st, for the, all the department heads and whatnot, to bring, to have this forwarded for Maytown meeting. I just, I just think it's too, it's too soon, with the, having a town accountant on board for at least a month should give the, the other departments... Apple time.
So, Mr. Chairman, would that include, like, coalition, because we're gonna have a warrant?
Yeah, I've already got a second copy.
We need to get it reviewed, the language reviewed, we just don't wanna miss the cutoff date, I mean, we'll get signatures, but...
That's the thing, that's what Erin was saying, too, is she was gonna have something, she doesn't wanna get signatures, I don't think.
I mean, how many signatures are needed?
Ten.
Ten? So, it's not, I, we can get signatures at a meeting, but I'd prefer to be able to, I, I, I do know that we're not gonna have the language ready by January 21st for submission.
I can't...
For the coalition policy.
If you adjust, if you adjust that, that date, you have to adjust all the other dates, so...
Tom? Is this gonna be an issue if we postpone everything up a month, move everything up a month?
So...
We got other dates, uh...
For our own departments.
Yeah, we have other, I mean, we have other dates, the February 1st, February 7th, so what you would be, I might be more comfortable if you did February 14th or something, not February 21st.
Good.
Yeah.
So, what my, my challenge with this is, and, and you know, I spoke in August for, that these dates were, were aggressive, you know, we're, we're now at a meeting where I know the strongest advocate for these dates is not here. advocate for these dates is not here.
Well, that's why this had to be placed on the meeting tonight for, if we wanted to extension, because of, obviously, we have a town accountant starting on the 23rd, and everything's due on the 21st, from all our departments.
Correct, so, so we're asking for, we're asking for financial articles from our departments, what you're saying is, we're asking for financial articles from our departments to be submitted before we have a town accountant.
And I don't think.
And that's what your concern is?
That's what my concern is, yeah.
Also, it's a Saturday, Sunday, so you need, if, if you're leaving it at this, you need to make a decision whether you want them Friday or Monday.
Yes, I, I would assume it would be the next business day, but, you're right, we should be clear.
So three weeks instead of a month, like Tom said, the February 14th?
Because as far as the, as the budget goes, Al, Mr. Regal, myself, Superintendent Masero, we've been working on this only a daily basis, so we are, the February 21st deadline by bylaw is we'll meet that date, what you're concerned with is, is articles coming in on January 21st, February 14th would give us a little more time to work with that, I'm not expecting a whole lot of articles coming in of financial, of 10,000 and over, by that, but that would give us a little more time, because Mr. Kastlarn was in this evening, and Mr. Regal and I were meeting with him about things that he needs to get done next Monday, so it would give us a little more flexibility.
So, I think your concern is, is very legitimate that we, you know, we don't have a town accountant that, that has had a chance to ramp up.
It's going to overwhelm them.
Yeah.
And actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, now that I'm reading this and thinking about it even deeper, ours is not really a money article, anyway, ours is a language, it's a policy article, so.
I just know most.
But it does, this is a unique situation, I think, I think the intent of these dates was to make sure people weren't submitting last minute.
Yeah.
I, I fully believe that that was the intent of why these dates were put in place, I think we are in a unique situation right now with people coming onboard and, and getting ramped up, and I would feel comfortable making the motion that we change that January 21st date to February 14th, as recommended by the TA, to give the town accountant a little bit more time to, you know, get situated. Or even the, even the 7th.
Just, just, let's, let's start for a second, no, I just, so, I actually supported doing things earlier, originally, because, because I, I agree with the concept that we want time, if we're being asked to sponsor something, we want time to look at it.
Yeah.
After going through it a couple of times, I, I have now, I feel like it's too early, so I'm just looking at what is a reasonable time to review as a board.
I think, honestly.
So I was just thinking, we probably, you know, if warrants close on March 5th.
That's by, that's by your statute, by your, by law.
Oh.
You have to close the first Monday of March, that's not.
That's town, right, town bylaw, that's not Board of Selectmen policy, that's town bylaw.
That's town bylaw.
Correct. Then, you know, we probably want at least one meeting, if not two, to review.
Should we look at the meeting dates and just make sure?
That's what I was just doing, so February 6th and February 20th are the two meeting dates right around there.
So should we change, instead of February 21st, make it February 19th?
Well, we had talked about the 14th.
Well, I mean, okay, so, is there a date in between, because if the 6th is our meeting, the 7th is the day after, so the 7th date doesn't make any sense, nor does the 21st, so is there a date in between that, so that we make sure that we have our?
So the two options would be, I would see, we could do it the 5th, we could do it the 5th, and then we'd have two, two full meetings.
That's what I meant, so, two full meetings, yep.
Two full meetings, it's still early, and I, I'd still like to revisit it, but it gives, that gives the town accountant, doesn't give them a lot of time, one, two weeks to look at things.
That's better than.
And then I, you know, I'd like to revisit this as a whole.
Yep.
I think a lot of that's early, seems early.
But that gives us two.
To review it.
Two meetings to review, and it gives a little bit of leeway to, to the town accountant to, because I, you know, I think it's important to get that advice.
Yeah.
Tom, do you think, I mean, do you think the 5th is already, I mean, the reason why you're asking is the 14th?
One thing I would eventually love to do is look at the entire bylaw.
Right.
The way it's structured, but that's something for.
That's a different.
Yeah.
Would you, but you feel more comfortable with the 14th, correct?
I would feel more comfortable getting an extension on that date, 14th is, yeah.
But how do you feel, the 5th would give you two weeks, the 14th would give you three, some.
But what's our meeting, what's our meeting schedule, it's the 6th and the, what's the next date?
20th.
20th.
So you would feel more comfortable?
Well, if we get it the 14th, it goes in our packet on the 15th, we can review it over the weekend, talk about it on the 20th.
On the 20th.
We'll have one, at least we get one in there.
Yeah.
And the reality is, we still have several meetings before town meeting.
Right.
I'd rather go with the TA's recommendation.
And the warrant doesn't close until the 5th, so it's not like.
It's true.
It's not like if anything, if, if on the 20th, we want to make changes or make recommendations, there's, there's still, it's not like we're making a decision March 3rd.
That's a good point, so that was the second, that was the second rationale for this, if there was something that the board objected to, it would give time.
Right.
For people to update.
So that still gives them several weeks before the warrant closes, even if it's, even if it's the 14th, that still gives them time.
But it would only, it does, the only, the only, 14th, so the 20th, it would just limit the number of meetings in front of the Board of Selectmen, like if they, if the board objected, so that's the 20th, so you have the 20th, do you get one more meeting? March 6th is the next Board of Selectmen meeting, so they wouldn't, like if, if something came up on the 6th, if they submitted it, and on the 6th there was some objection, they wouldn't have a second meeting to make updates, but, or get signatures.
But they know in advance that that March 5th is their deadline, so.
But honestly.
If it's your priority, and you want to.
If you need, you want an article on there, for the most part, I mean, we.
They're going to work through the TA.
Yeah, and I can see getting shot down.
As long as it has, that's, you know, like.
Right.
So.
Well, there's been a motion made.
Well, I would, I would, I think I made a motion that it be done much earlier, I would.
I think I thought the motion was for the 14th.
Was it for the 14th?
14th, but do you, Tom, you could.
I'm fine with that.
Is there a date that you feel more comfortable with?
It's just the two-meeting thing before, before.
Well.
I mean, the one thing that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right, that's all right.
You know, the one issue, I shouldn't say issue, the challenge that we have with this full calendar, and Ms. McNeil, the whole board is aware of this, is obviously, a lot of our local aid numbers, this is very early.
Yeah, super early.
I mean, we will have the governor's number, but it doesn't mean that we'll, you know, you have the House numbers and.
Right.
The Senate number is much further along, one thing we did to try to help this along my last year in Swampscott, is we made a bylaw change that moved town meeting to, instead of the first week of May, to two weeks later, to at least give you a little more time to get, that's, that's a bigger discussion for.
I think it's a bigger discussion, yeah, and not going to change it this year.
But I'm just saying, to give more time, at least to maybe have a clearer picture on certain numbers coming in financially.
Makes sense, yeah.
I think that is one thing that is clear, is that purely from a budget perspective, we are getting new numbers from the state in, in different areas, whether it's assessments that we owe them, or funding from the state or the House budgets up until the last minute.
Oh, yeah, and you will continue, I mean, it's, yeah, the budgets change after town meetings, so.
And if you go to conference committee, we all know.
Yeah, it's just changes.
We may not even know until June.
Exactly, or sometimes later.
I mean, I'm a little more comfortable with, I'm a little more comfortable with the 5th, just because that gives us two meetings, but if the majority of the board feels the 14th is a better date, I, I just think we need to set expectation, there are pros and cons to both, I think we need to set the expectation to departments, boards, and committees, that, you know, we're, we may look at this at one meeting, and if there is feedback or questions.
To be prepared.
There's, right, to be prepared.
Yep, and, and I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's a unique situation.
It is a unique situation, that's, that's the thing, if, Tom, I'm sure you can bring this up at your department head meeting, you know, that you're extending this, and we're going to be, they're going to be under the gun, so make sure.
I can tell you right now, is that we're not really looking at any other seriously financial articles at this point, school department, you know, Superintendent Masero is doing his thorough review of whether something else comes out of there or not, but, you know, we've pretty much gone through capital, and that, I think, has been a good process, we may be looking at the sources of revenue, but that process has been done very well, not necessarily seen at this point, larger articles coming by here that are of a financial nature.
So this is the question of, do, do any of the committees have articles that we don't know about yet?
Right, that's the key.
Right. So from a department perspective, if you're comfortable.
Yeah, department head, I'm very comfortable, because usually, those would show up as capital items versus generally a separate standalone financial article.
Well, I've made a motion that we change the date to February 14th.
Are you handing this to?
Yeah, I'm gonna second it.
Okay.
Talked about that earlier.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So that's the first date, do we need to adjust any of the others?
Tom, does anything jump out with you with this new town accountant?
I, I'm sorry.
Pretty impressive, is that the only one?
I would assume that all of these would be due, and we can go back and make that motion, if we're, if we're voting for one, why would we have?
Two more.
Why would we have other ones due?
Are you, are you saying that they should be, they should all be due on the 14th?
Well, but, because if we're concerned about the town administrator, sorry, the town accountant, not having a chance to review things for the 21st, and we're moving to the 14th, why would we ask department heads to have other articles in on the 1st?
Mm-hmm, okay, so I'll make a motion that we adjust all the dates, the February, the January 21st, February 1st, and February 7th dates be adjusted to reflect February 14th as a result of the new town accountant coming onboard for the purposes of this May Town Budget Meeting only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think. To adjourn?
All in favor?
Uh, second.
I'm sorry, second.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.